...
... I am calling the budget hearing to be ordered on Thursday, December 5th, 6:01 PM. If you have any questions, please keep them in the chat.
Mr. Pitts.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mr. Quagliano.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Cretti.
Here.
All right, thank you then. We have a whole contingent here. We're going to start off with the pledge of allegiance, and I think we have some celebrations with that. We're going to start off with the pledge of allegiance.
.....................................................................................................................................................................
Good evening, board. We are so excited that the school year is underway, and also so that we can bring back this awesome Huntley High Five Award Program, and to have students back at our board meetings. So, we've got some special students here tonight that we're going to introduce to you. They're each going to come up, and they're going to introduce themselves to you, what school they're from, what grade they're in, and then they're going to stay here and hear a little bit about why they were chosen for this award. All right? So, Chloe, will you kick us off?
My name is Chloe, and I am in second grade, and my school is Chet.
Chloe. Chloe, I'm going to read a little bit about what your nominating teacher said, and then it's on the back of your certificate, so you have the whole thing too, okay? Chloe is always ready to assist her peers and is willing to help those who have a question. Chloe is a great school model. Chloe's brightness and enthusiasm indicate she's prepared for an amazing second grade this year. So, Chloe.
Hello, my name is Tyler, and I go to County, and I'm in third grade.
Great, Tyler. Here is what your teacher had to say about you. Tyler is respectful and kind student, always ready to learn, and demonstrates amazing behavior and grit in his work. Frequently asks the adults even how they're doing. That's fantastic. And is a great conversationalist. Way to go, Tyler. All right, everybody. So, we've got Sophie Stoner here. She is a second grader at McHaven. All right, Sophie, you want to hear what your teacher had to say about you? Sophie is always willing to help her friends and teachers. She is kind and respectful towards everyone, both above and beyond in her work. She sets a positive example for our classroom. He looks the great work, Sophie.
My name is Nora. I am a fifth grader in Morton Elementary School.
Nora arrives every day with a smile on her face. She enters the classroom excited and eager to learn, demonstrating a positive attitude and growth mindset. Just this past Friday, I noticed she left a thank you note on her desk to the custodians. Nora's kindness and respectfulness make her truly deserving of recognition for her wonderful personality. We're so proud of you, Nora.
Hi, I'm Madeline Bateman, and I'm in eighth grade at Heinrich Middle School.
Madeline is an excellent example of what it means to be a hawk. She's supportive and kind to others, helpful when needed, and above all, can be counted on for a great smile or friendly greeting anytime. Madeline is definitely involved. She has one of the leads in the upcoming school play, "Musical is a Musical." When is that?
Um...
She can be seen working hard on her craft, is a leader in every practice where she encourages others. Great job, Madeline. Keep up the great work.
Hi, my name is Kendall Starks, and I'm in seventh grade from Marla Middle School.
Kendall embodies everything it means to be a Marla Mustang. In the first two weeks of school, she has gone above and beyond to show the power of inclusion for all students. She supports her peers in their exploratory classes, providing them with positive uplifting praises, assisting in accessing class materials, and overall just being an all-around supportive friend. Way to go, Kendall.
Hi, I'm Justin Perry. I am a sophomore at Huntley High School.
Hi, Justin. Justin is always involved. He's a student that I can count on to participate in the bell ringer activity. He does a great job talking in front of his peers and sharing his thoughts on the question or prompt that's displayed for class. Keep up the great work, Justin. Now, Justin, I know you have a lot of teachers, so I'm going to let you know which teacher this was from. This was from Mrs. Fulton. So, boys, we're going to have you come on around, and we have a certificate of congratulations. And parents, thank you for setting the example for your children to be examples in our school every day. Okay, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay?
And I'm going to go right to the second slide, because, you know, I always start these presentations with a reminder of what's important, and that's all the kiddos that we have here up on the screen. And let me tell you, that was way better. So, if we could do this, like, before every budget hearing and every levy, that would be great, actually, because I think it's a great reminder of why we're all here, and why, especially the budget and the levy, and asking the community for taxpayer dollars is, well, so important, right? I'm pleased to present the fiscal year '25 budget. This is the final draft of the budget. We've presented the budget several times over the course of the last six months, so I'm going to be fairly brief here, but, you know, as brief as Mr. Altmaier can get, I guess. I still have several slides that I am going to go through, because I do feel that we're...
And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick. Awesome. And then, parents, I want to give you a couple, too, okay? All right, very nice. Everybody can look up here real quick.[1368.81] That's a great question. So a few years ago, the ASB came out with a requirement that activity funds be included within an audit report and a budget report, right? We have our board accounts, four thousand general ledger accounts from our board, which is primarily our budget. But then we have activity accounts, we have all the high school activity accounts, we have middle school activity accounts, we have activity accounts at the elementary levels for which we manage independently, and those are accounts which are primarily driven by fundraisers, right? Students raising money for themselves, for students, student-led, student-raised money for students. And we manage all of those, and we provide you those on a monthly basis, we provide you those activity reports. But our auditor likes to see, okay, on average, how much do you collect and how much do you spend on an annual basis, and we're required to include that as part of the budget. So that's a placeholder, is what it is. So if you see, if you see activity revenue of a million dollars, we also have activity expense of that same exact amount, so it's really neutral within this budget. Great question.
And my other question is, on the, on the monthly fiscal updates that you do, we have huge line items for things like Amazon. So where is this accounted for? Like, how are we managing those? I know we've had discussions about using Amazon and using our P-cards, but how is that managed in relationship to this budget? And where do those get broken out? Are we managing them down to the line level for supplies, things like that?
Well, yeah, every department has a supply budget, right? Some departments, some high schools have many supply accounts, right? Because they may break it out by department, they may break it out by fourth, as an example. So all of those things, all of those Amazon charges, all of those P-card charges are managed really at the individual building level or department level, right? So it's been determined over the years, what are their needs, right, to function appropriately, and we provide those funds to each and every building. But what we also give the buildings, the autonomy to do is when we provide them the resources that we think they need to run their building, they have the ability to move dollars around. So if they know they need some more instructional supplies for their building this year versus maybe some purchase services, some PD, they can actually allocate that money into that line item. Now, we do have internal controls to monitor the purchasing of supplies, we do have internal controls to monitor those individuals that are using the P-card. We review the P-card, they're signed up, there's POs that are done at the building level, signed off by the building principal, forwarded to accounting, reviewed by accounting, and then any, for instance, any P-card transaction greater than five hundred dollars is required to have the backup of my approval. I will tell you, over the years, we have seen an increase, as the world has seen an increase in P-card usage, for sure, because the world of the internet, the world of Amazon makes it very easy, and sometimes it also makes it very cost-effective, and sometimes cheaper to go that route. Sometimes we are receiving a deeper discount if we pay now versus pay later. So we're seeing all those things. And the other thing that we do benefit from with our P-card transaction is we are receiving merchant service fees rebates to the tune of probably upwards of a hundred thousand dollars back in annual rebate by using those P-cards as well. So it's hard to answer that question.
To answer, I mean, to answer more directly, it's, there's multiple general ledger accounts that those items get posted to, dependent upon if they're, like you said, they're broken out, most of it's in the supply type of account, okay? But they're broken out by building, I mean, the GL is pretty detailed as to what, you know, a lot of levels, but it's not detailed in the sense that it's like, there's an Amazon account that's not yet categorized for an accounting purposes. I mean, there's a, it's a vendor, you can go look up the vendor in some, but that doesn't get reflected directly, and it's broken out categorized by the very specific line items that are in the general ledger.
Which, if you heard me say about four thousand, that's, yeah, four thousand general ledger account numbers that help us account and categorize a lot of these things as well.
So they, for example, something like that could be in probably fifty to sixty different general ledger accounts as far as different Amazon purchases off that card.
Oh, easily, yeah, easily.
The only question, is, if you had to say the one or two items that concern you the most on the expense side, that we have the most risk with, beyond health insurance, what would that be?
Beyond health insurance? Well, I think there's always a risk from the state, right? We have filed our private facility reimbursement, we have filed our transportation reimbursement, but they have yet to finalize, finalize their proration in exactly what they will pass. So there is always, there is chance that we will receive less revenue than what we are anticipating here. There's also a chance that the state will, state, without all of these additional federal dollars coming in, that the state will return to the level it was five, six years ago, seven years ago. And we all recognize and remember some of those dark days of two thousand and ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, when the state was in financial, well, there's still a, there's still a financial.
Yeah, but, yeah, the revenue generation.
So state revenue, a little bit, CPPRT the last few years, even though they've given us estimates each and every year, this year we fell short by three hundred thousand dollars of what we budgeted, even though we received that estimate from the state of Illinois, so there's a risk there. I think the other biggest risk is the economy, and it's interest rates, right? I think we're seeing it now, in the treasury rates. We're seeing a decline in the rate, which is great for homeowners, absolutely, I think it's great for the economy, but for the, for the companies that are not somewhat reliable, but are making a good buck on that five percent CD, are no longer going to make that. So I think there could be some risk on the interest earning line item as well. Yeah, I think on the expense side, we can manage to most of our expense line items, with the exception of health insurance.
I have a question. So I haven't looked, I was trying to find it just quickly here, how is CCI tracking for this year?
The last I saw in Mr. Quaglio, I'm correcting, I thought it was tracking a little over three percent.
Okay, yeah, three one.
Three one.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
All right, I'll just make a couple of comments on this budget, there's a lot of things in here, and I think you hit on them, I just want to emphasize them. We have shifted a lot of the spending on the, to the people in the buildings, and you see that through the benefits and the salaries, if you break it down, there's some pretty big numbers in there that reflect the new HGA contract and everything that goes with that. So I think that's a good thing to point out, but we have actually pulled back on some of the other spending areas, because we have good buildings, we don't need to do a, we don't need to do this, we're not buying as many buses, those kind of things. So on the cost side, this is a pretty good budget, and just for the record, your assumption for new construction is six hundred and fifty-six thousand?
Approximately at fifteen million, that's how much I'd rate.
And that's, thank you. If there's no other questions, we will move to number four, is there any public comment? All right, so I'll move to number five, which is the FY twenty-five budget, which was presented by Mr. Altmeier. If there's any discussion about that, any additional discussion, I would like to make a motion on the budget. So any other discussion? All right, so I'm going to make a motion that we adopt the budget as presented, but reducing the property tax revenue by four hundred and five thousand, to bring the revenue down, there would still be a surplus, so that's the motion I have, is there any discussion you'd like to have on that?
Can you put the rationale, please?
Sure. So the motion is to adopt the budget as presented, but reduce the property tax revenue by four hundred and five thousand dollars. Okay, and then to Mr. Troy's question about the rationality, I spent a lot of time with Mr. Altmeier this week going through on the property taxes, and my rationale for this is I would like, we have taxed a lot of local taxpayers quite a bit lately, and by reducing it by this much, we've put it at the existing taxpayers of an average two percent increase year over year. And again, we can do this in the levy time, we can either do it at the levy by reducing levy, we can do it for an abatement, I think we just owe it to the taxpayers who have funded us quite a bit with this inflationary time, that's why I would like to do this. I think we still have a surplus, and there is still a large chance that the new construction will come in much higher, and see the revenue even higher than what we're suggesting here. The six hundred and fifty-six thousand is roughly half of the new construction that we had last year.
Can I add a point?
Yeah.
Mr. Bitman mentioned that we had talked on this, and we did, we talked a lot on the overall budget. And I think the point that Mr. Bitman is making is if we go back to this slide, and this will help a little bit, right, we have talked, and Mr. Bitman has talked about in several meetings throughout the year, that we should have a goal, right? We should have a goal to see what we can do for the taxpayers and limit the increase to the taxpayers at two percent, we've heard that. And with the CPI locked and loaded for levy year twenty twenty-four at three point four percent, combined with this decrease in debt, we're a little above that two percent, a little above that two percent. And so he asked me, you know, in calculating and looking at that budget, you know, is it, is it exactly a two percent? And I said, well, no, it's a little over two percent, because based on the assumptions that we input, you know, excluding new construction, it's a little higher. And so what Mr. Bitman is trying to get at is if we make a commitment to our taxpayers of two percent, correct me if I'm wrong, he's asking that we do that adjustment so the budget kind of reflects that commitment, whether it's a reduction in what we asked for in December, or it's additional abatement, or it's something. I think that's what he's asking for, that summarizes probably the whole idea.
I don't think in the scheme of things, we still have a net surplus of eight hundred thousand, and I believe we will see more, I believe right now we'll see more new construction than what's forecasted, could be wrong, adjust that, which would also be additional revenue that we would be able to get.
So could you restate your motion?
So my motion is to adopt the budget as presented, with the exception of reducing the property tax revenue line by four hundred and five thousand dollars.
Okay, so on the new construction that we would get, isn't that affecting the next year budget?
All right, turn off my mic. Fifty percent.
Fifty percent.
So fifty percent of the budget assumption we made will.
Affect the current year.
Correct, and a little more than, it's actually a little more than fifty percent because we lead into the first thirty days of July.
Fifty-two percent.
Approximately, right? No, fifty-two.
Fifty-two is the second half, right?
No, fifty-two's the first half, yeah. We get a little more.
Yeah. Um, earlier. I mean, theories don't disagree too much, I don't know that I like seeing our surplus being less than one percent of the overall budget, kind of like where it's at from a safety net standpoint, but in a, I'm more open to maybe saying two hundred thousand, reduce half of that, keep it, or it's slightly above a million dollars of budget surplus.
Is your hesitation, have we, because you've been here for a while, historically have we ever fallen that low? And what were the concerns now? Or what were some of the issues we had?
Because we've had two consecutive years of deficits, and then this year is gonna, I mean, it was gonna be pretty close.
Yeah, and I was gonna provide that at my fiscal update, but it looks like we're gonna end the year between the five and six hundred thousand dollar operating surplus range, and during my fiscal update, I'll provide a little background detail for that.
Yeah, it's, the level, I mean, it's not a huge concern, and it's, it's, you know, we've had a couple of years where we've run a little bit of deficits there, I mean, it's over three years prior to this, it's kind of averaged out, break even, this year comes in a little over. Good, because I was concerned we were gonna come in under, and actually, we would have come in under had not those rebates come through, correct, Mark? That, we were, we're gonna be short for the year except for those.
Correct, yeah, yes, for the blue cross, blue shield.
So my reluctance, so my reluctance.
Corrections.
And again, I mean, and that completely, you know, I'm more, again, just trying to be that, too overcommitted one way or the other on this stuff, so I'm more open to a couple hundred thousand dollar adjustment, and it'll, with the idea of, I don't, I don't disagree with trying to get to two percent ultimately, we'll figure that out at levy, at, you know, December, or levy time.
And that's part of the discussion here is, this is just setting the bar where we're gonna be.
Yeah, yeah.
I believe construction will be a little bit higher, you might find some grants that we can get, some, maybe the healthcare will come in a little bit lower, and then we'll see something a little bit different, but just really trying to set the bar a little bit on the revenue side, and communicate to the taxpayers that two percent's what we're targeting. The effect of this really doesn't happen until December, but I just wanted to kind of set the tone now, because it's, budget discussion is really when we should be having discussion on the revenue side. All right, any other discussion? All right, so with that, I'll go forward with my motion, a motion to approve the budget as presented with the property tax line minus four hundred and five thousand dollars of revenue from what's listed, can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson, can we have a, we'll call over.
Mr. Quaglio.
No.
Mr. Craddy.
No.
Mrs. Murray.
Yes.
Mr. Bitman.
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Thompson.
Yes.
Mr. Troy.
No.
All right, so the motion will pass four three.
Okay, can I add, so, so the budget's approved minus four hundred and five thousand dollars in property taxes, I probably should have said this before you made it, but not really, it will be reduced probably within the ed fund, make it easy.
Could do the transaction.
And I'll, I'll look at it.
Have the extra money for the transactional fund, but a thirty-two percent increase?
Right, so, so the surplus will come down by four hundred and five thousand dollars. The state budgeting forms are typically in here, by the way, and I meant to mention that, I had a big note here to tell you this, we're having a problem with our financial software system, uploading those four thousand accounts, those budgeting accounts into the system, so normally you would have these eight budget forms in here, they're very hard to read, they're really small, and so you probably didn't notice it because they'll be really hard to get a look at it. But as soon as that is done, that will also reflect that decrease, and that is required signature by the Board of Presidents. So in approving the budget tonight, you can sign that document whenever that is completed, and we do expect it completed, hopefully within the week, but we're having issues with our SD software system, so stay tuned.
No, great in the budget.
No, but in a future year, there will be, you may see that come down the pipeline as a recommendation, so just wanted to give the board and get a little clarification on that, so, thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll move to six, which is, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting at six forty-four PM. Thank you, Mr. Quaglio, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, the budget hearing is closed, so I will call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Thursday, September fifth, and at six forty-five PM, it looks like it's a mess, the kind of whole.
Mrs. Wiley.
Yes.
Mr. Craddy.
Here.
Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Bitman.
Here.
Mr. Quaglio.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
All right, with that, we will move forward to number two, is there any public comments now? No, all right, thank you. All right, so we will move to number three, revision and adoption of the agenda, does, I see one change, which is we will remove the policy and the legal, number eight, but does anybody see any other changes? All right, so I would like to make a motion to adopt the agenda as presented, minus, striking number eight legislation and policy.
There's nothing there.
So can I have a second?
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Quaglio, can, we'll see if we can get to the voice call, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right, with that, the revision passed through, and then we move to number four, curriculum and instruction committee, Mr. Thompson.
Good, thank you. Dr. McCrindell, could you please provide us with an update on the progress of the secondary literacy plan?
Sure, good evening. So we were writing an update on our K-12 literacy plan throughout the last school year, it was a strategic plan goal last year, which we met by developing that plan, and if you remember, in the spring, we did bring a presentation of materials for elementary, and was the promise that we'd be bringing some secondary recommendations at the end of the summer, beginning of fall, but here we are. So I provided in the memo a summary of the work that's been done, we did establish a team that was led by Mr. Truax in our department, Cherokee High School, and middle school for English, comprehensive of different teachers from different grade level schools of the Federas, to give some input on where we are with our materials. Our key focuses have been on professional learning, we partnered with ROE4, which you guys, we brought that to you earlier this school year, to continue that training on the science of reading in alignment with the Illinois Literacy Plan, which we did include in our agenda packet as an appendix, a ready to refer to. And then we also have been focusing on really looking at literacy from a more comprehensive perspective, of it not just living in the English classroom, but it living in social studies and science as well as literacy in English, because we know that the assessments that we're taking are testing students' knowledge of reading technical tests as well as literature texts, and that we're trying to really look at that view comprehensively. So this has been kind of a new approach for us, to look at this by interdisciplinary view, which supports the science of reading and the Illinois Literacy Plan work, as we continue to build that knowledge. And so we have been focusing on professional learning, looking at that from an interdisciplinary perspective, and then also that look at our PLCs and looking at our units of instruction to make sure we're meeting our students' needs. And so before you, we have two different recommendations, we did, we were able to get our preliminary IAR scores in this last summer, as well as we've been looking at our local data, and positive news, our middle school data is looking really strong, and we are excited about what we're seeing, the forward progress our students are making at each of our grade levels, and so when we begin to show you that data in November at our curriculum workshop, we'll be able to present that and let you know kind of how that goes. And so when we're looking at that information, it's difficult to say that we want to make a change to material, when you see data trending in the right direction. We know we have work to do still in middle school, we know that we want to keep that trajectory going, but we don't want to change too many variables at one time, and don't just adopt new materials if we don't necessarily feel that we need them. So at this point, our recommendation is to maintain using Common Lit, which is what they have been utilizing as a resource over the last couple of years. We will have teams of teachers still come together to identify the unit, and make sure that we are teaching them with fidelity across all of our different grade levels, but we do not see a need to purchase something new right now as a comprehensive resource for middle school, which resulted in what Mr. Altmeier was saying, our decrease in our new adoption line. We do know that from the feedback from our teachers, that there are gaps with our EL resources, our IEP resources, and maybe our gifted resources, and so we will continue to take a look at that, and might need to purchase some supplemental resources to help ensure we're meeting those students' needs. But in general, our student data is looking positive, and we don't want to make a change if we don't see it, with the caveat that we will continue to look at data, and if we start to see a need, we will be bringing, you know, something to you guys after we kind of dive into that. So I know that there are some teachers who really wanted some new materials, but then there are some that didn't, we were kind of a mixed, it was kind of a fifty-fifty, you know, mixed metal bag there for middle school, but we are committed to making sure we provide the support that they need to meet our students with IETCLs and accelerated, but it's a great spot to be. So that's our middle school recommendation, and, you know, status quo and continue on, but still do that work to make sure we're leveraging our units the appropriate way. We did go ahead and include just the units that are in Common Lit, so you can take a look at them, and the appendixes, and some information about that. At the high school level, we have continued to see that our scores, our FDU scores have steadily declined by a couple percentage points each year, and we do recommend adopting a resource. We are recommending StudySync, Huntley has used StudySync in the past, who actually was initially adopted in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, but it was adopted as a resource at the time, and it was not actually the core curriculum. So teachers created units of study, and then they would go to that resource as needed to supplement, so it was not used as this is what we are teaching. And so our recommendation and the team of teachers selected this was to go ahead and purchase StudySync in entirety, with the understanding that it would be our core resource, that we would follow the unit, that we would make sure that we are committed to that, because they have developed the units in a way that follow the standards, that they are comprehensive, they have a lot of resources to help support our students, and we know that overall, we need to do some work in our, in literacy up at the high school as well. And so what you have in front of you is a recommendation for some materials, McGraw-Hill is the publisher for StudySync, and so we are recommending to place these materials on thirty-day review beginning today. We have gone ahead and included the units from StudySync, as well as, they do identify some novel choices with the units, we have not selected novels yet, because we want to make sure that we're going to use this, and once we select our unit, we will have teams of teachers come around, and we would choose the novels, but the novels that were our options are included here for you to take a look at, and we would provide. take a look at, and we would provide that update throughout the year, once we, um, have made those selections. Um, so that is our recommendation this evening, um, it is for a six-year, um, both digital and print, um, balance of materials, um, the teachers felt very strongly about having something kids could have in their hands to read, as well as some digital options, and so, um, print resources are more expensive and they are consumable, and so you'll see that, that built into there, um, but we want to make sure that we are meeting our students' needs, and we know we need to, um, provide those supports to our students at the high school level. And so that's what we have before you this evening, and I'm, I'm open for any questions.
So, um, you, you said, I'm one of the questions I was going to ask, so, with the six-year program, and I love the idea of having tangible three-D material, get away from screens as, as much as possible, um, do the, do those titles then become the property of the student, or can they be reused the following year, and if so, can there be a cost reflection if, if we go that route, more like a library of these resources or textbooks that get turned in at the end of the year?
I should have brought one in here, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm happy to show you, the way that they're consumables are written is a combination of some text that they can write on, as well as write in the workbook as well with some questions and answers. So, um, right now, our recommendation is to have one for each student, which is quite good out that way, um, and that, that will be our recommendation now. There, it, we could go with having that, but then we could make copies of something to write on and turn in, or having kids transfer, they would be doing maybe on a sticky note to a computer, you know, we could go that route, but we're, um, we think that that's probably the best option right now. Yeah, good question, we do look at all of those options.
Got a question, so, as far as, um, like, the freshmen, my grade, so these are the list of all the units, is that a different, um, setup than a normal school year?
Yeah.
As far as textbooks and all that?
Yeah, so, right now, um, they are not using these at all, and so, if some of the novels might, you want those they teach that they're used to, but they're put into a different unit now, um, some might be different, and so, once we, the way that this is set up, is they give you six unit options, they recommend doing the first four, because that covers your entire school year, and then you can either add additional units in, or if you want to, um, add a novel in that maybe, you know, is on this list that we didn't have time for, they have units around that novel as well. So this would be different than what they're doing right now.
So as far as, like, the school year, parents would look at this and be like, okay, this is what's going to be?
Yeah.
Because some of them, I know my son was a freshman last year, so his teacher did, like, a group project for, not project, but I mean, group study on five different books they could choose from, and, and if they were doing that route again, it'd be listed here, correct?
So, the, um, team, so, in here, under each of the units, there's three novels that might be selected, we will identify which ones we're choosing later, so for, like, unit one, maybe it's a might and miss, throwing that out, that's a common book, um, and we wouldn't do a novel for every unit, what you're talking about are literate circles, that kids do have some choice in some of those novels, I do know that our teachers have found those to be beneficial, because they, um, feel like that gets kids engaged in some of their reading, and so some of these books aren't ones that kids necessarily would choose to read, and so, we want to provide a kind of, they want to still have a part of their school year, where there'd be some choice of some novels in there, some books, um, so that would still be there, but it would be a, it, those would be different than the, what?
Would it be like the, each teacher for each class would have their own discretion on books, or would it be just, just, just grade level?
We would have a grade level conversation about English one, these are the novels that we choose from, English two, here's your one, English three. And these are, I should have clarified this, I'm sorry, this is just for our four core English one, two, or two, three, four classes, um, A P, all of the others have different rules and all the things, sorry, I should have clarified that, um, but yeah, this would be for those four, and then our goal would be to have some of those, so, English nine, these are the list, circle appears, your option of books, and kids can choose.
And Dr. McCrendle, with that list, right, so we have curriculum guides and whatnot that could be posted up on, and those are utter changing, so right now, as we're going through that review, that one looks different?
Yeah.
So those novel studies could be in saying, here's a list of twelve books that it might be, that would be in English one, here's some that would be choices from English two, so that that could be kind of said that, hey, we can read this in freshman year, and now almost every reading again, it would be laid out that way.
But we could definitely, yes, thank you, Ms. Lombard, we could definitely include that whenever we put the final, this is our unit, we could put those options as well on, there should be very clear and transparent, but, but hopefully have an option for it.
I just wasn't sure if it was different, or if I'm not reading those parts, or, or if I'm a freshman next year, so I'm like, will it be the same as his brother, or it will be different, or if there are interesting choices of books that my son had last year, so I was like, curious, then is it the same, or whatnot?
Yeah, those will probably be changing, because based on the unit that gets chosen, some of those novels are, you know, we need to look at those for sure.
Got you, thank you.
Yeah, that's a good question.
And I have a question, so, we're obviously looking at this because of the test scores at the high school being reflected in the S A T, with the switch to A C T now, have we, do we have any information that this would address that new testing that we're going to be doing going forward with A C T? Like, have they piloted this with other districts or states that have embraced A C T versus S A T?
Yeah, so I have, I did ask that question, um, we're, we're doing a little bit of, you know, we're trusting right now, the process on all of this, but, um, A C T and S A T both measure the same standard, assess the same standard, is what we're being told, um, they're supposed to give us, you know, input on that, now how they test them does look different, so what's nice is StudySync does have some different assessments you can, um, give kids a practice one, conducive to test they read, that would look like an S A T, an A C T type of assessment, so we're hoping we can leverage some of that, but I did reach out to other, um, you know, other, this is a well-known, used, um, resource across the nation, um, in different states, and they have A C T, S A T, and their scores are, you know, similar to ours, I'm really, I have some, you know, still doing some work and things like that, but we're hoping that that enjoys, yeah.
Thank you.
But the standard is supposed to be aligned in terms of, and to me.
Thank you.
Any other questions? One more question, was, was this compared to any other available programs outside of McGraw, and what were the, you know, the comps, or what were the differentials in, in cost?
Yeah, there were, um, there, we looked at quite a few different ones, um, there were some that were just middle school, some that were, you know, only high school, McGraw-Hill, Pearson, all of your big publishers, we did look at some of theirs, um, cost-wise, I would say it's very comparable to, they're pretty equal, at, at the end of the day, but McGraw-Hill, the videos were on the P V side with their training, they comped that in, um, into their costs, you know, with that, um, but when you look at, um, for example, Pearson was at my perspective, that's one of the options they had, you had to pay for an online digital platform that was similar to turnitin.com in addition to their resource, but was more expensive because it had that personalized app and all those things connected, we didn't go with that, because we have Star and Freckle and other resources that we don't feel like we need to do, so, um, we did that back.
Good.
Good question.
Other questions? Thank you, Dr. McCrendle, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Turn it over to, uh, Mrs. Wiley, for the special education committee side of things.
Yep, and I will have Mrs. Gill provide her update.
Hi there, I'm excited just to share an update on some opportunities we're providing in the special services department through our family engagement liaison, Jill Shadle, I think you met her last year, about this time, McGraw-Hill is just talk about what she does to support our families in the district, um, whose children receive special services, and it can be lots of new information and new terms, and, so we really, uh, like to leverage her partnership, to really empower families to be actively involved in, um, in special education. I say all that to say, she's done a lot of work to ensure that we're doing, uh, family engagement activities that are supportive of all students, and some of our students require some, uh, pretty specialized opportunities, so I just wanted to highlight a couple that are coming up that she's really had a, a, a big hand in coordinating, one of which is, uh, partnership with American Eagle Outfitters, uh, for many of our students who struggle with some pretty intense sensory needs, uh, we're partnering with American Eagle Outfitters to, uh, create a back-to-school shopping experience, for our students who may require some specialized, um, sensory, um, support, things like a quieter environment, uh, reduced lights and sounds, um, to, uh, on a weekend where it can be just dedicated to some of the students in our district who require that level of support. So we're working on finalizing details on dates and, and, um, opportunities with, with them, and, uh, as soon as that comes, uh, finalized, we will send the invite out to our families and, and make sure that, um, there's an invitation that comes, but really excited about that partnership, thinking outside the box around, you know, how we can, um, really expand, um, very typical experiences in a really unique way. So, uh, second opportunity that she has really spearheaded is a partnership with Northwestern Medicine, Humley Health Bridge, uh, we have a wonderful parks and rec, um, option for many of our families, and we also have a partnership with Northwestern Medicine, and they have a beautiful facility that has some additional opportunities for rec leisure, and so, um, we want to expand our opportunities for students with special needs to engage in, um, health and wellness in our community, and Humley has, um, the Health Bridge has reached out to offer us an opportunity to, to bring our students from the, starting with our students in the light program, um, to engage in health and wellness under their, um, they have an instructor there who would lead some activities, and we would bring families in, um, partnership as well, so that hopefully that leads to some lifelong health and wellness and rec leisure opportunities for those students and their families. Um, and then certainly, uh, we have a, a family learning series that we did last, uh, last school year, we had four opportunities in the evening for families to come in and learn about the course and, um, and just educate ourselves on, on specialized, um, ways to think about all the things we do. Um, this year, we will do the same, our first family learning series event will be on October eighth, um, we will have the authors from The Way to Inclusion, which is a, a book that we talked about last year in C I C as a book study, and in, through that, um, we were able to, and by we, Jill Shadle was able to get ahold of these authors, um, and they actually are able to come in and, um, and give a live presentation, um, that would be, uh, live via Zoom, uh, for our families, community members, teachers, students across the district, it would really be open to everyone, just talk about how we do meaningful inclusion well, you know, that we've talked a lot about that for our students in special education, and what that looks like, and, um, practical ways that we can, as a community, support our, our students with special needs. So, uh, they will be coming on October eighth, from six to seven, there'll be, and, uh, more information, and we'll be coming, but really wanted to highlight these opportunities, and thank Jill for, for doing exactly what we've asked her to do, which is to engage families in this, and our community, and students and staff, and, uh, thanks. I would talk all night to me, but those are the three highlights I wanted to share with you for this month. Any questions about that?
All right. Thank you. And finance?
Okay, all right, uh, finance, uh, point one, we have our, uh, payable for purchase orders and press checks, accounts payable, disbursement listed, um, is there any questions, um, from the committee? First, if not from the committee, go ahead, if not from the committee, from any of the other board members? Okay, um, so we should be good to forward that to, uh, board meeting for consent, six that two is monthly fiscal update.
Thank you, only one thing to add, um, and it's noted in your memo, uh, the year-end audit, um, went very well, uh, so I'd like to thank my team, Jenny and team did an absolute great job, um, stepping in, uh, after Ms. Solms left last year was no easy task, and certainly, uh, doing this one-hundred percent on, on her own, uh, is, is never an easy task, but she, uh, she did an absolute great job. So the audit went very well, did talk to the partner on that, we are still awaiting, uh, some of the audit entries to come through, but the auditor was able to go ahead and preliminary provide a profile score and ran it through the calculation, um, and the good news is that, uh, we, we have returned to the status of recognition, uh, and that was one of our strategic planning goals, so, um, Mrs. Lombard could add to that. Uh, but I did want to provide a little more, um, input, we had talked about the operating surplus being in the range of five to six hundred thousand dollars, and I'm giving you that range, because I'm waiting for the audit entries, uh, to come over from the auditor still, um, and we should be receiving those, uh, here at the end of this week. Um, and I, I think that's where, you know, after looking at everything through the audit, um, understanding that the substitute teaching line, the extra duty line, both of those line items were several hundred thousand dollars over budget, and if you recall, when we issued the tentative draft, those were, those were very material adjustments that we made to those line items, uh, C P P R T coming under budget, um, that combined with the Medicaid under budget, I don't want to say equally offset the interest earnings favorability, um, but, but I think all those things combined with being still a little over on the health insurance line item, the one-point-one definitely helps us, um, i- is, is why we're at, where we're at, so, did want to provide you a little bit of that background, um, to those amounts that I mentioned earlier during the budget hearing, so, for that, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Questions from the committee?
So the substitute line, is that, is it just related to people calling in, that type of stuff?
I think it was a combination, and Mr. Zarek can add to that, but I think it was a combination of two different things.
Yeah, that's related to two things, um, the increase that we've made over the past five, six years, um, not only catching up, but, I mean, one of the better paying districts, um, for subs in the area, um, also, um, returning to some, um, more robust professional development, um, our staff, um, some of the buildings we need to sell that out, I wouldn't say it's related to, um, future attendance, I would, uh, probably normal, um, for the most part, if we went back and looked at, um, the data over those years, but, um, definitely the increase in terms of, okay, we'd be the most affected on that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Turning that, okay, um, we also have our activity funds, any questions related to that report? Okay, we'll move on to six point three is the revenue contract, there's three fundraisers listed there, is there any questions or concerns related to those revenue contracts? Okay, now we'll forward that to the, uh, regular board meeting for consent, onto building and grants. Thank you. All right, Mr. Linklist.
Good evening.
Good evening, um, anything to highlight on the O and M updates for the evening?
Yeah, I have a few things, uh, highlighted on my sheet here, uh, the Chatham chill water system, um, replacement has been, uh, operational, about ninety, ninety percent complete, we're waiting on some final quote-out documents for that, bunch of the files completed. The curtain wall restoration at Humley High School is the glass being replaced at the front of the building, um, is near completion, I believe the glazers were there today, it's wrapped up, so, final windows, round door twenty-nine, so that'll be closing soon. Uh, and then the Humley High School roof restoration, uh, all the bunch of the items are complete, we're waiting for the warranty documents, which I believe we discussed today, so we'll be closing up that shop as well. Any questions on the update?
Can I ask one question?
Yeah, go ahead.
We had some pretty historic eaves, or some big strong eaves, was there anything with the building that popped out? Is all handled, is, is up very well?
Yeah, we did have a slight issue at Conley, but I think we made it through, um, with some chiller issues, but, yeah.
That part of the high school, that's not the one twenty-one?
The eave.
Yeah.
Yeah, that chiller's been giving us some issues through the years with, uh, repair needs, so that's why we're, we're entertaining this next fiscal year, um, to replace that chiller.
That part was hot, it opened up.
Was it?
I said, so, yeah. So the evening's short. Yeah, okay with, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear about it.
That's okay.
With the, with the chiller issue at the high school, are we exploring potentially putting either better fans or air conditioning into the field house? Because it gets stuffy, from what I've been told.
Well, there's no air conditioning in the field house, if you're aware, um, but we do have a, a system, so, in our build automation system, to draw in cool air overnight, so obviously, you know, top given, nice, you're not drawing in cool air, but, um, so that's our way of cooling it down, we do have zoo fans lined up in, in the field house, um, but I don't think there's anything coming down the pipeline to put air conditioning in the field house.
I think when we looked at building the field house, I think it was cost prohibitive to put air conditioning in there.
Right.
So, um, I think that that likely will still be the case going forward, and obviously the, the cost to go into the hardware, putting the A C unit in there, plus the, um, electricity that drives that, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a big empty space, but I was wondering if there was any thought as to how we, when, when it does get warm, how we?
Well, when that day comes, it might, it might be more, maybe we'll put A C in the field stuff.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? All right. Anything else on O and M updates?
No, sir.
Okay. Then moving on to 7.11, the professional services agreement with HR Green, please.
Yeah. Back on August 1st, we presented to the board with an updated O and M lifecycle capital project report, which included FY '26 budgets for payment replacement at the high school and administration building here. It also includes sidewalk replacement here at the administration building. And you had the math, I believe. So and there is how like the areas where we're going to be, this can be taking place. So we reached out to HR Green for a proposal for their services for including the design, destruction administration, and to oversee the overall project, help us along with that. So this proposal came to $156,281 for their services. I would like to recommend to the board of education to approve these services at the next working.
Yeah, we have a long history of working with them and they've been.
We do.
Very, very good with the services that they provide.
Right.
My opinion. So, okay.
I'm going to go a little further south on locations. If you have any questions on locations, are you guys familiar with the math?
I'll leave it to the board if they have questions on it or. Or not.
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, sir. And moving on to item nine.
Right. You? All right. I have no update to read anymore. Do you have a report given?
Yes. So in my memo, I just wanted to give the board an update briefly on our move to a new website. So we, things are unfolding with that. We've been working as madly as we can to make this happen. Right now, our tentative launch date for that will be the end of September. So Friday, December 27th is what we're looking at. So things are coming together on that and we're excited about it. I think it's going to be a great new tool that is easier to use. And when things are easier to use, it, we just do better overall in keeping things up to date, which is the whole key with the website. So just wanted to let you guys know that we, we have that tentative plan to make the big change. And then the other thing that I wanted to make everybody aware of, and we've been doing some internal communication on this as well, is that we are launching a new program for our seniors in the community, adults over the age of 60, to be able to attend our athletic events and binary performances at no charge. So this is something that we've done, maybe I would call it maybe a soft launch of in the past. I'm just not sure it's been heavily promoted. So we have created a new, a new cash card that they're going to be able to use to take to these events. They'll be able to pick it up here at the district office, or it can be mailed to their home. So trying to work out the, just making sure everybody here on internally understands what this is before we do this external launch. But basically, we'll be contacting Del Webb, the senior center, senior center to invite them to participate in the program and then kind of tracking this success to see how much interest there is. And so, but we're excited about that. It's a new way for our seniors to engage with some of the great things that are happening here in our district and our students. Those two things. And then just excited about, you know, a month under our belts here and some big events coming, coming up here, especially this weekend. So we've got the first home game, football game tomorrow night at Humley High School. Along with that, we also have our first rad event of the year. So we're doing a Latin American culture and heritage event also at the high school. And then Star 105 is coming out to circumpride our life campaign at the high school. So it's, it's a triple inning at the high school. It'll be some fun tomorrow night. So looking forward to that. And then the next night, we've got the Hootenanny. So I think we're around, Mark, with now 3,500, 3,600 registrations or something this year? Am I right?
Yes, this would be the largest year. It's heated 3,600. And in terms of sponsorship, we've also hit the magic number of $50,000. So it's the most, by far, we've ever raised for this event.
Excited about that.
I hope to see y'all there.
Any questions for me?
Other question? As far as the Silver Pass?
Yes.
Will that be promoted, like within the district, like for grandparents or that aren't in Del Webb? Would they, would parents get to tell their families that way?
Yeah. I think that's a great, I think that's a great idea. You know, we're, we're wanting to make sure that these are seniors that live within our district boundaries. That would be the one caveat to that. But yeah. And I know we've had some celebrations with our grandparents in our buildings here. So yeah, we'll try to get the word out, you know, to our, throughout our normal channels, but our website, our newsletters and all that good stuff.
I just had an idea. It would be cool if you had like a little social media photo op frame, seniors with seniors, high school seniors with seniors in the background. That'd be social media. Thank you.
Well, thank you for this. Wow, you're hired. Thanks. Awesome idea. Yeah, we're excited. We're excited about it. It'll be great. Any other questions?
I did want to say, I'm really excited about the alumni hunt that's being done, the homecoming.
Yes.
I think that's an amazing idea. Also a way to probably get some seniors, we probably have some seniors that are graduates at Humley High School. I'd like to be able to, I know that we're building that right now. But I don't think that our reunions here are necessarily as well publicized or well looked forward to as like other surrounding districts.
Yes.
And I would love to start to see that happen because we talk about the portrait of a graduate, but then it goes further than that. You know, what does, what do the portraits of those people look like?
Yeah.
The fact. So I think this is a great way to start that.
I think it is too.
I'm going to chime in on that in one of our strategic planning QPIs.
Oh, good. So more, more to come on that. But yeah, that is, that is something we're doing that the high school's doing new this year, just for everyone to know, that at homecoming on September 20th. They're having alumni hunt. And so we are trying to get the word out there with the sort of social media posts out there. I've asked our community partners to also share it and just to hopefully try to get plenty of our alumni there as we can. Thank you.
I got a question. As far as, this is just an observation, as far as who handles the social media, like for the sporting events? Like whoever wins the game, like, oh, soccer team won whatever today, like on, on an event. Same with the team those this year.
Okay. Okay. I would imagine it's, it's different individuals, possibly coaches.
Yeah, I wasn't sure.
Hey, everybody. We do have some of our coaches, our assistant coaches. Some teams do have kind of like media groups from students. And so they post their various accounts. If there are athletic accounts, if there are athletic accounts, typically through our athletics department, either our AD or assistant AD.
Great. Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Couple items here for the board of education side of things. 10.1, six day enrollment.
So here we go ahead and look at our enrollment as the six day comes. And so that would have been a little bit ago, August 21st, Wednesday, August 21st. And so inside the packet there has a breakdown by grade level, by building. And then at the middle school and high school, and then ETC at light. So just a reminder where we ended our school year last year, the very last day of school for the 23, 24 school year, where you were at 8,541, our six day enrollment. Again, we do that six day because during that time, we have some families that haven't withdrawn, they haven't shown up. We've tried to reach out, getting information on whether they would be coming or not. And so then we get the ISBE number update right there. And so as of that six day enrollment, our enrollment in District 168 is 8,340. Last year's enrollment for that six day was 8,409. So we are slightly down. There are, thanks if you look at our kindergarten class, 485 kindergarteners at this time. And our senior class is at 693. So you see as the smaller numbers are coming in, we do know that there's a lot of growth and development out there. Just not seeing it yet, getting our numbers here. Give some pockets of classes that might be a little bit higher. But if we look at the ratios in our, our class sizes, we do know that we have some, ones these are based on schedules, maybe at the high school, and there may be some classes that are a little bit larger, well, within these averages, but then another class might be quite a bit smaller with that. One of the things, if you take a peek in there and you see some of our class sizes, with that teacher, pupil ratio are just a little bit off, not here, but when you think about our dual language classrooms that are elementary, most of them are smaller than the other course and classes that are in that same grade level. And so that teacher is in there, but it does bring that ratio down. So some of our, our classes, especially on this campus, are a little bit smaller as they have shifted in the academy type approach. When we're seeing those over at Reed Road, those are more in line. But we do have a few smaller classes here that are going through, you know, the grade level and grade span as we move up. So that does bring our ratio down just a smidge. It's not drastic, but I did want to point that out. A few, we do have some areas that we're watching and if growth does pick up and we have movements coming into that grade level in that building, there's some decisions that we'll be, you know, needing to make internally, whether that is, you know, which class or which school we might assign to or whatnot, or other types of support. Hope you would work very closely with that building administration, ETA on the things, recommendations that we may have internally with our community and this department. But any questions that anybody has on the six day enrollment?
I guess a couple comments of the light program, I think hit a record, 52. And then just, I noticed a little bit on the Heinemann's sixth grade, the student to teacher ratio was a bit lower than everything else. But if there's nothing with that structure, you're not going to, you're just going to see the benefit of that if you're slower.
Right. And we saw that go through where at one certain year, Heinemann had larger class sizes than Marlowe. Now that's kind of reversed in some of those areas. And the team approach that we have right now, it is what it is. We would have to look at that if it drastically went down in what we could do with that, but we're not at that point right now. But is that on that?
Yeah, the history on Heinemann, if you went back five years ago, they were, they were filled and the class sizes averages were 29, 30. And we saw the drop coming and kept telling that committee it was coming and it's here. And as Mrs. Lombard said, it kind of slipped with Marlowe and picked up the lower class size right now. But we've also got a lot going on over here with construction too, that could be a few years out.
And we do have, and we don't get a large number, but we do get a number of requests for boundary charges, right? Maybe for a variety of different reasons that, that are out there. And we had a few that were at the middle school level that recently we went ahead and declined because the numbers are quite a bit different at Heinemann than they are Marlowe. And so I know that that is a little bit of a shift and we had years that we were able to accommodate that. Now we want to make sure that we are being equitable to the students that are in those classes and the staff there. And so with numbers that were so different, we went ahead and said, this is a, you know, boundary that you continue to.
So pupil teacher ratio, that's all stipulated, like it's falling within range for what our contract stipulates? And it compares pretty equitably across other schools in the county?
Just so, if we look at that and Dr. Zarek, I have you hop in there. In our, in our contract, which is our set numbers, these absolutely are in there. We'll want to definitely highlight this at Conley, third grade. It's right there. And so that's one of those grades that we are watching and looking at. And we'll address that QPI to it in some different ways. When you look at that compared to other districts that are in our county or surrounding our areas, some will be right in line with that with those lower, you know, twenties, mid twenties kind of effect. And then you're going to hit others that are sitting at, at upper twenties with that thirty rate. And so that, that was hard, how to compare that way. But I would say these are pretty comparable with what we've been seeing over the last number of years in our district.
Thank you.
Back to move forward to 10.2, strategic planning measures, Miss Lombard.
Sure. Well, I, I will go ahead and start on just remind everybody when we left off here, that was KPI 4.1, that we were not sure, were we going to meet 82% or 86%? We needed to wait for that audit. And as Mr. Altmeier did share, that we did get indication that we were going to meet that and, and return to recognition area, which would put us at, at 86% of our goals from last year, indicators from last year being met. So did want to highlight and share that information there. And then go ahead and remind everybody, this is your five of our five year strategic plan. So the four long-term goals, goal one, all students achieve personal growth and development. Goal two, all students are prepared to achieve lifelong goals. Three, all students learn in environments that are safe, secure and supportive. And goal four, the district remains sustainable to meet needs of students and communities. And we worked at a cabinet level and then at a larger leadership level, getting directors' input than getting administrators at the building input. And we had a longer list. And then we went back and we kind of set down our, what are some of the things that, again, are continuous improvement things that we're doing anyway, right? Should they live on this list or those are things that we're doing and we want to continue to do and maintain? Those things did come off of this list because again, we're doing them, they're practices that we should be doing for that continuous improvement. So you're going to notice that there are fewer KPIs, doesn't mean we're doing less. But the priorities of where we really need to move forward, the largest number of KPIs, seven of them, should and do fall in goal number one, all students achieve personal growth and development. And so, Dr. McCrinnell, feel free to jump in at any time. And also, Mrs. Gilby, because you guys have worked really together on these, a lot of similarities from last year in looking at that proficiency and growth on the IAR, on the ACT, in our reading and math area. But that goal, KPI 1.7, that by December of this year, we would want to create a comprehensive K-12 math action plan. It started off that it would be for the year, but you know what? We want to see some action too. So we're going to get that done by December, present that, and then start to see the labor of action being implemented in during this school year. And that's not just for our genet. That's for all of our classes. So we are going to be taking into account gifted, our PL, our students that are either in co-taught or self-contained classrooms. So what that might look like might be different, but again, it's focused there. Seeing that enhancing math achievement by leveraging data-driven instruction to form teaching practices, identify student needs and deliver targeted interventions. The learning and innovation team will present and implement patient progress before the conclusion of the school year. So we'll have a couple things that we will come forward on with that. But our recommendation is that we would look, look at this and present an update in December of what that action plan would be and then update as we go through. Because we know that we took all year for that, we need to see a change. We need, we know there's a sense of urgency around math. And what can we do? And a lot of that might be with those teaching practices of what's going, where are we seeing the strengths? What are we identifying is working in classrooms and how do we leverage that in some of our other areas? Did either of you want to jump in on that one?
I wanted just to talk about the ones before that, Mrs. Lombard, which are our general proficiency and growth ones. We kept that three to five percent, we had this conversation, and there we felt that was helpful to have the range to shoot for. And in some, we met it and actually over, or I guess overtook the goal, right? And overshot the goal, which is great, and some we did not, but it was helpful to have that. Our school improvement plans are on target to be set up in a similar fashion, just like they were last year, to have that goal. One thing I just want to bring to the forefront is we do know that the state of Illinois is bringing a group together to take a look at proficiency scores and looking at what that level proficiency is. So we kept it at a three to five percent, knowing that we might need to do some cross blocks later on to help show, do we need it? Because if they adjust what the level proficiency is, we want to adjust ourselves. So just want to put that out there. We're aware of that. We will do that work, but we wanted to still grow three to five percent and make it authentic. Three to five percent, not just grow because of a customer changing and because we want to hold ourselves to a high, you know, high level there. So wanted to share that. You know, Mrs. Echo, I think one of the most important things that we're doing intentionally this year is really looking at how are we disaggregating the data and looking at our subgroups, as Mrs. Lombard had shared, and really just getting better at data literacy and how do we look at those subgroups?
and how do we look at those subgroups, because they do impact the overall three to five percent. And so when we talked last year about IAR and SAT and all of our special education students, ninety-nine percent of our students who receive special education supports are tested on the same measures. We only have one percent of our students who are assessed on an alternate measure. So when we're talking about the scores as a whole, we are talking about ninety-nine percent of our students receiving special education as a reminder. So I think as we get better and more intentional about that, we can look at those students who are right there on the bubble, so to speak, and really target them in some specialized ways. I really appreciated the partnership with curriculum instruction and with our principals, in particular, who are leading teams and data teams and really beginning to look at those. So, yeah, I think those differences that we see in the language and the way that we're targeting strategic planning is, is gonna really be positive for all of our students.
Thank you. As we jump down to long-term goal number two.
Can I jump in just on the long-term goal number one? Can you comment a little bit on the, we've had some discussions about the growth measurement? And again, I'm not against growth, but the way this is measured, in my opinion, doesn't really measure the growth. Is there a reason we're focusing on that, or what's the, why do you want that in there? Otherwise, it's just a stretch.
Now, I can definitely see to that. I think when it comes to growth, it's an important number to help show, when we look at our subgroups, are we actually meeting intended goals? Because there are some students who are not meeting, and it will, it's a huge jump to get them from where they are to proficiency. When we look at growth, we're able to see that, but we also, I want to say, Mr. Quaglio and Mr. Trevino, you guys, about five years ago, we added the proficiency goal into our strategic plan, and it was not always that proficiency piece. So we wanted to make sure we see the value of both of those, proficiency and growth. So that's part of it. The other part is the state of Illinois does give fifty percent of the weight for designation for our K-8 district schools on growth. And so if they're putting so much of emphasis on that being fifty percent of the rating, we want to also make sure we're monitoring that and really get our kids, the part that, Ms. Moon was just looking at from data today, the part that we're really driving into is, in a quadrant, how do you get kids that are proficient and growing? And we have those group of kids who are proficient, but they're not growing at their expected growth. So we do have some of those conversations, really around those subgroups, our accelerated gifted kids, our kids with IEPs, our ELs, that's really where that lives. And we want to make sure we're kind of pushing that envelope. That's why it's still in there, a couple of reasons, but we did make into proficiency piece, because that wasn't always a part of our strategic plan a few years, you know, a couple of years ago even, because we know that we need to keep our eye on those parts of that.
Yeah, I guess my, when I dig into this, if you had the focus on the growth of the people who are not proficient, that might be a better way, at least, for me, to look at it, because the problem is it measures people who are extremely proficient in their growth ratio when you measure them against people who are throwing things around. You're measuring them against people who are also very proficient on that. I guess my view here is the focus should be on the ones that are struggling.
This is gonna be a Friday project of digging into this, I want to look at that. I can see where you're coming from.
Yeah, it's just, that's my problem with it, because it doesn't, it doesn't truly seem to measure what we're looking for. And we really need to focus, I think, on the kids that are not proficient, and we're gonna look at the growth, because those are the people I want to see growing, the kids who are already advanced typically are naturally growing anyway. And maybe that's a deeper discussion.
Yeah, we could definitely look at that. And as part of our, our curriculum workshop in November, we can make sure we show some of that data. Right now, since the state of Illinois does model it with everyone all in, we, I would recommend maintaining it just to keep that eye there, because we don't want to have something not go. But I, tomorrow, I will be diving into some of that, just to look at.
I don't want to debate how they measure students.
Absolutely, right.
In Illinois, we're here because it's not good.
Correct.
We do want.
Yeah, thank you for that one, though.
So I do have a question, actually. And I'm kind of missing words and just trying to get clarity here. Are we increasing the percentage of students by the three to five percent? Or are we improving their proficiency and growth scores by the three to five percent?
A little both. So proficiency, hold on, we are increasing the percentage of students who are meeting their proficiency. So if right now, if that's forty-seven percent, we're gonna grow that to fifty to fifty-two. I just threw that number out. Totally, I remember.
That's fine.
I should have said ninety-nine percent.
But then you can't go beyond a hundred percent.
Correct, so that, yeah, you're right, I went down. And then the other one, the percentage of students meeting their projected growth, what we're doing is, so the state of Illinois does give us a, if Amy McCrystal's scoring at a seven forty, and I have scored a forty this year, seven twenty last year, a seven hundred the year before, I'm projected to be at a seven fifty. So we're saying, if we know Amy is here, what percent of students, of Amy, everyone, is scoring there? And so we're gonna grow that number by three to five percent.
Okay.
Just a little bit of both?
Yeah, and that's fine, that's fine. I just wanted to be clear on, is it the students or the growth rate that we're trying to grow here?
Both of those look a little different, proficiency versus growth. This goes to Mr. Bettman's comment about how that measures.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Under goal two, to the areas that we are looking at as KPIs, again, the learning innovation team will develop an action plan, an actual plan for educational programming pre-K through twenty-two. So looking at all of our programs in support of Degrado student groups, multilingual learners, students with disabilities, gifted students, economically disadvantaged students, and other groups, the focus centered on ensuring opportunity and access. And then we would, again, we were gonna look at that, we had a variety of different programs. I think we need to do a deep dive into all of our programs, from our little itty-bitty threes all the way up to twenty-two, and looking at what those are at. I think that will give us a good framework, too, of what things, do we need to focus, where might we have holes or gaps? And then that can help us as we move forward into our next strategic plan as well. And then the second is a comprehensive review designed to support students' college and career readiness. And so a lot of that CTE component, and what would that look like, again, across all of our programs and our post-secondary outcomes, including employment, educational training, independent living for all of our students, again, pre-K through twenty-two?
Can I have a, can I have a few questions on that long-term goal? So for the first one, two point one, the actual plan for supporting the diverse student groups, the multilingual learners, disabilities, if this is a district effort, it would be, it would be like grade-specific, though. Like, it would be recognizing that students in pre-K versus grade twenty-two might have different understandings of what that material looks like. So I want to make sure that if we're doing this as a district effort, we're making it applicable to the understanding of the learner.
Right, so if we were, literacy is a big review right now. So, but if we were doing that literacy, what does that look like with our ECC students? Because of those two, each at grade levels, all the way. So looking at all of our, exactly.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I didn't want anyone to think that we do with single programming and that it would be targeted to our entire student population, because that wouldn't really be fair to the older students trying to understand something way beneath them, or younger students trying to understand the material. And then for the second one, for two point two, so employment, do we include that employment? Not just, I'd like to see us maybe make sure that we are including in, like, civil service employment, some thinking people that are joining our military, as well as other civil service opportunities, like people that are going into fire service that don't necessarily need college degrees. But I'd like to be able to make sure that that's being accounted for here as well.
Sure, and I think one of the things, too, as we go through that, there's partnerships. We know that the police department has that program. How do we tap in and utilize that and share that information with students? The fire department has, you know, a training program as well, and interns, and actually that one, I know we have a number of students the last few years doing that. So this would be trying to get exposure out there so that students know what are the different careers from early on all the way up? And then where can we beat up some of those programs?
Yes, I just, I see that there, there's a changing now of what, what a graduate does really look like. And it's not necessarily students that are necessarily going into a four-year, two-year college program. So I want to make sure that we're identifying those students that are looking for alternatives outside of just that, to gauge, that's not necessarily the full success the student is going to afford to your college. They can get success in lots of other things, as long as we prepare them for those. And I just want to make sure that we're opening up all those communications.
We want all of our students to know all of the opportunities that they can have, and then they make those choices.
Yep, exactly, thank you.
I think the central leadoff at the high school has really, you know, enlisting, enrollment, and employment, those are kind of the three E's, right? When you're at the end of the day, trying to figure out those pathways. And I do know that there are some classes that we have more students interested in, and we sometimes can't offer as many because of either limited space or resources, just with, you know, different ones. And so we really want to do a deep dive into that and make sure we're offering, we're not holding some kids back from something they would be interested in, maybe in a trade, because we don't have a space, or that we're not supporting something that maybe is not their interest. So that's definitely a part of looking at that program review of all of that.
And that would be tapping into the partnership that we have with, like, MCC, with those, the dual-degree programs and all those other programs. Okay, thank you.
One other question. So I'm curious, Mrs. Shoshtware, and I'm sorry if I butchered the name, she does the mock interviews in the springtime. Is that something, how open is that to people, to students that want to get in? I know it can't be unlimited, but I don't know if that's, if that's an outside participation volunteer, or is that a specific class?
Yeah, it's a classic incentive for that. And actually, we saw a decline in those numbers.
For years?
Just a couple of years ago, it is starting to grow back up.
Okay. Because that's something, those kinds of skills, you don't want to limit that, right? Here's an opportunity to learn how to do your resume, and that's something that should be extended widely, because everybody's gonna need one eventually at some point to do whatever their next step is. So if that's something that we can widen the net, so to speak, although as participants in those mock interviews, there's, there is a lot of kids, but it moves pretty quickly in doing that. Okay, thank you.
Goal number three, we've got three KPIs, and this involves students' learning environments that are safe, secure, and supportive. The first is Huntley one fifty-eight strives to create an environment where every student feels that they have at least one trust digital. And we talk about this one a lot, and this one is incredibly important, I think, that we need to make sure that our students have that person, whether that is the person that they see the first time they walk up the stairs, if the bus driver is greeting them, and that's that relationship matters. And as we're able to connect and engage with our adults, and we're gonna measure this, we had a long discussion on how do you measure that, right? There's gotta be through students, right? Students are going to need to be able to identify who that is. We did talk about, we do have students who might be non-verbal, or youngest learners that are in ECC. And so some of that might have to be through our parents, whether it's a parent-teacher conference or other events, to be able to identify who that is. And so we're working on identifying, would that be? And we, I prefer it be earlier on, right, so that we know who that person is, that, hey, if this is someone those go to person, if we had something with attendance, or it might be behaviors, or they're having, you know, peer conflict, who's that person that we know that they know that they could go to and would be there for them? It might be a coach, it might be a teacher, it could be somebody in the front office, just that we have somebody in that building that every student feels comfortable going to. Three point two, decrease the percentage of students who are chronically absent, five to seven percent. Moving in the right direction, we filmed our first, what it, what do we call it? Video podcast, I guess, today, and it was all about attendance. And so thank you, Mrs. Spears, for being our first guest on that show. And so that'll be airing here in just a couple of weeks. But continue to push that forward, and there's a lot of buzz about it. And right now, it's a lot of positive buzz, so that's really good. And then three, develop a comprehensive multi-year safety plan based on the most recent safety or security assessment, right? We had that assessment, wanting to look at similar to how O and M does. We're looking at in what things might need to be replaced, what things might need to be enhanced, what things do we not have that we feel we should have? And looking at that on a year-by-year and making sure that's embedded in the budgets, so that we're not just maintaining, that we are continuing to grow in that area of safety and security. Any questions on goal three?
Will we, will we be getting, with the KPI three point two, with the absenteeism, it's been a big focus this year. Are we going to be able to see, like, monthly reports? And will parents be able to see, like, maybe some of that data on our new website? Like, it would be nice to be able to, we, I don't want to go back to the COVID years, but we have.
We're gonna have a dashboard, and it's gonna be out there, yeah.
We have a dashboard, and that would be wonderful to see, like, how does your student measure to other students? How do, how is our school really doing? And I think it would be a great opportunity for us to get that information out to parents.
Yeah, so Mrs. Barnes, I'm working with Mr. Freemus to figure out how we can take that information. It's right there, we can see the demographic in our school. And how do we take that and get that on there? So one, we have a district-wide number that is up on your website any day that you pull it up, but then specific schools as well would have theirs. And so, yep, that's the goal, that we're gonna get that up there hopefully sooner rather than later. It's not visual, and it's not in your face, it's outside our mind, and so we want those constant reminders. Goal four, remaining that sustainable to meet the needs of the students in the community. The first one is in an effort to make the best financial, operational, and facility-related decisions, district perform a projected demographic and enrollment analysis that'll look at demographic trends, enrollment projections, building capacity data, and current and future development analysis within the district boundaries. So we kind of started that, remember, very high level, giving that chart. There's a lot of this that we can do with some of the software that we have now and partnerships that we have, that we feel a lot of this can be internal. If there was something that we felt we needed to get some outside help on, we would bring that forward to all of you. But that is gonna pull in registration, human resources, O and M, all of those departments, because, again, we don't want to be faced with needing something at crunch time on, you know, if there needed to be an expansion on some area or whatnot. So we would like to be able to see that and have some projections. And the last time we did this, we were spot on with that. So pretty confident that we can do the same thing moving forward there. Four point two, engage in a, this is a big one, right? It's the comprehensive strategic plan process, inclusive of students, staff, business, parents, and community voice to establish our new district, our new strategic plan, starting for next school year. It would also include that portrait of what does a Huntley one fifty-eight graduate look like? Portrait of what does a Huntley one fifty-eight learning environment, what does that classroom environment look like for a student? As well as one we added later, what's the portrait of what does the Huntley one fifty-eight working environment look like? How do we get the staff voice? What, how do we, we know that if we have a great working environment, that it's absolutely gonna impact the student environment that's going on in the, in the classroom. So those three different things would be also part of that process that we think, you know, are going forward on. On the twentieth, Dr. McCrystal, we have a consultant coming out with EAD, again, as part of our partnership, there's not a cost to that. For us to sit down and really look at that timeline, we bring that forward to that next board meeting, kind of giving updates on, here's what we feel would be the best way to approach that for the school year, again, getting all of those stakeholders involved in that. KPI four point three, we'll create an ongoing district-wide family learning and community engagement activities. We've seen a lot of that come through, through a variety of our departments, and want to continue that, aligning with what our strategic plan goals, also being inclusive of our pre-K through our twenty-two. With, we are moving forward, not to say the other groups are not important, we will continue to maintain and enhance those, but with its targeted efforts to expand our opportunities for our district alumni. There are a lot of individuals that have been in this community for a long time that still are here. We have heard, unfortunately, that some are feeling, once they graduate, they're disconnected to the district, and we don't want that, right? To be able to have opportunities where, one, they feel welcome, but, two, there are things that we know that they have expertise that we might be able to tap into and to be able to do. And I know some of that started a little bit with some things that they've done with recognizing, you know, the athletics, football at the Hall of Fame. I would love to see down the road us to have an alumni Hall of Fame, where there is a few individuals that are giving back to our community. But you've got to start somewhere, and you have to have a committee to be able to work through those things. But we have done a lot with our businesses, with a lot with our parents and our students in grabbing that student voice, and we'll continue to push forward on all of those things. We're kind of gonna wrap this in, this is in an area that, I think, we have a lot of individuals, what that would love to be able to be part of the district to continue to give back to the students they graduated from. So hopefully, that was kind of lining the line, that was something we're thinking about there. And again, this something we were thinking about there. And again, this is a homecoming event that's a step in the right direction. We think that we can really expand on that. With social media, we can find individuals from way back, right? So we know how to connect. And then four point four, wanted to, we know that there's, um, an idea around, um, staff retention, right? We want to get good individuals here and continue to retain them. So, um, to have a goal here that the district staff retention rate will be at least at 92% or higher from the July 1st through June 30th. But with that, we want to make sure we're taking out retirees because they're not leaving for negative reasons, right? They're retiring for non-redeals. And so that's probably a handful of those with that. So, uh, those are KPIs. Are there any questions? Anything we'd like to add, any thoughts on any of these?
I like the retention. So what would it be, what would it have been last year? I'm not trying to push you much off, but.
You know this. I absolutely do not.
Maybe get you that.
Obviously, this is a good one. It has nine that we're.
Yeah, I pulled that goal because on Izzy, we've got that 92% retention rate on there, but this is going to be more inclusive when we add some more staff into that number that Izzy doesn't look at. So we're, um, it'll have talent supervisors, boss drivers, so it's going to reflect a little bit more. So I'd have to pull some, we'd have to run some data on that.
Well, we can do that. I would bring that, if, if pushed forward, we'd be going on that next meeting anyway, so we could get that, and if we needed to adjust that number, we could pull that.
I mean, the retention rate too will feed into your trusted, um, person within the district, because I think right now, you might find a trusted person in elementary school that you will feel that you're connected to even when you go through high school and you want to maintain that relationship. And so a retention rate will feed really well into that.
All right. Any other discussion or questions? Thank you. Ms. Lombard, any reason we should not push this forward? All right. Ten point three, the minutes, we have August 15 minutes for the Board of Education meeting. Any issues pushing that forward? Forward with that. And then, uh, any other comments?
Oh.
All right. Thank you. So we will move into closed session here at 7:55. Like a motion to move into closed session here at 7:55 PM, as indicated by the opening meetings act, as written out here, where I've got all the legislation and minutes meeting, we've got all the votes for this act. Thanks, Mr. Quagliano. Dan Loehl.
Mr. Viden?
Yes.
Mr. Quagliano?
Yes.
Mrs. Wiley?
Yes.
Mr. Cready?
Yes.
Mr. Troy?
Yes.
Mr. Thompson?
Yes.
Mrs. Murray?
Yes.
All right. We'll never move up there.
Chairman, we're going downstairs for a second.
Halloween candy is on sale, so I'm hoping that our little drawer...
Halloween decorations outdoor.
Oh, yeah.
I mean like people massive, massive... I'm talking about stores, I'm talking about people's lives, their houses.
Yeah, we can, I can do this.
Going by a house, I'm like, oh my God.
All right, so we'll move to number 13, resume in public session. Let's remove, resume the committee in the hall on September 5th, 24 at 9:06 PM. Can I have a home call? Thank you, Chairman.
Little chee-chee. Right down the line.
Oh, Mary. Mr. Troy.
Here.
Mrs. Murray.
Here.
Mr. Thompson.
Here.
Mrs. Wiley.
Here.
Mr. Corleone.
Here.
Mr. Bitman.
Here.
Mr. Cready.
Okay, with that, they resume the public session. So I will make a motion to adjourn at 9:07 PM.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wiley. All in favor?
Aye, aye.
Also, meeting is adjourned.
I'm very rich tonight. I'm hoping it would be at a home game.